Seventh under item one, call the order 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigle.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber. Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen. We have a quorum.
Excuse me, Mr. Veen, you were muted during roll call.
Here.
There you go.
Gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Veen. Under, uh, item two, discussion items 2.1, Grand Forks Renaissance Zone Project GF66 Mill Square. So. Is, uh,
Brooks.
Mr. Richards or Mr. Conlon? Mr. Brooks?
It's Meredith Richards joining, can you hear me?
Richards, yes, hi, we're on item 2.1, the Renaissance Zone Project.
Thank you, yes, we have received the, the request from Epic Holdings, this is for the rehabilitation of the Mills Square Building at 301 North Third Street, this is a lovely historic building right at the corner of University and North Third that's been pretty seriously underutilized for quite some time. Um, the request that's before you is the standard five-year property tax abatement on the increased value as well as the state income tax exemption that's, um, has become kind of the standard package for Renaissance Zone programs in Grand Forks. As you can see, it does meet the threshold for any rehab projects must invest at least 50% of the current true and full value. This project is going to be substantially above that, so easily meets that threshold. Um, the owner is going to be appearing before the downtown design review review board this coming week, so they're very eager to get started. So the request is, um, authorization from the city to approve this and then staff would submit it to Department of Commerce for preliminary approval so that the contractor can get started.
Certainly, Ms. Richards, any comments or questions for Ms. Richards?
Move approval.
Move by Weigle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dockler, any other comments or thoughts? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, Ms. Richards. Item 2.2, sidewalk list number one for projects 8120, 2020 City Sidewalks. And Mr. Lieberman?
Yes, good evening, thank you President Sandy, members of the committee. Uh, three weeks ago, the city awarded its annual sidewalk repair contract. Uh, this contract is used to, for two purposes. Uh, one, to install sidewalks in new construction where they're missing. And also to repair sidewalks that pose a safety concern. Uh, primarily, we receive those type inputs from customer concerns essentially. So the request before you tonight is our first list of sidewalk locations that we would request um, to special assess, uh, the sidewalk repairs to the benefiting properties. Uh, should you approve this list, engineering will send a letter to each resident, uh, giving them the notice of assessment, uh, the estimated cost and the opportunity if they wish to repair it themselves, uh, to notify them of that opportunity. So staff's recommendation is to approve this first list and expecting that there will probably be second or possibly third list later this summer uh, as sidewalks are identified for repair or installation.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman, any questions about the list or the process? Move by Veen, thank you, is there a second? Second by Weber, any other comments?
Just one, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, Mr. Weigle.
Um, I've noticed on the list that they've got addresses in East Grand Forks and Thompson, and why is that?
So the addresses that are listed are the property owners and the address that they have listed. Um, sometimes their mailing address is different from the physical property, but I can assure you, we are not repairing sidewalks in East Grand Forks.
Sounds good, unless they want to chip in a little bit more than we'd want to.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lieberman?
Mr. Sandy?
Yes, Ms. Mock.
Um, would there be any sort of consideration considering the circumstances if somebody wanted to defer a year and not um, do it just to not add a special to their property? Could they, is there an appeals process for that where they could just defer it from 2020 to 2021?
Mr. Lieberman?
Ms. Mock, that's, that's a good question, honestly, I, I'm not sure. Um, a couple of thoughts though, if it was a safety concern that the staff validated, um, we would probably recommend repairing it sooner than later. Um, if it isn't an area that's, uh, it's not a safety concern and there perhaps is good rationale uh, for deferring it, we might recommend that as well. Uh, we do have a, um, uh, I believe it's in the city ordinance that new construction has to have their sidewalks constructed within nine months of receiving their building permit, so that's one, one consideration we would also look at.
Mr. Sandy, we have Mr. Swanson and Mr. Grasser who would like to comment on this as well.
Great, Mr. Grasser, how about you first?
I was gonna let Howard go first, but I was just gonna remind the council, we have adopted some new policies there a couple of years ago. The sidewalks can be assessed over a 25-year period and we have that, that lower interest rate on them, so they are able to uh, spread those costs over quite a long period of time. Most of the repairs are, are, you know, one or two panel type situations for the most part.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser, Mr. Swanson, something to add?
Uh, just briefly, the answers you've been given are accurate. You do have an ordinance that does require new construction of sidewalks. That ordinance, uh, does not have a deferral method. It could potentially be deferred by action of the mayor under the course of an emergency to the extent that the emergency declaration is in place. If it's a repair of a broken sidewalk or an unsafe sidewalk, the city has a potential liability for concerns there if we were to defer it. Lastly, I was gonna also bring up the point that you have made pretty substantial change program as far as deferral of expenses, but in answer to the question, under current law and under current policies, there would not be a basis to uh, defer that unless the argument is the, the physical nature of the sidewalk is not such that requires repair or replacement.
I, I think, uh, for the sake of argument, um, I would doubt that our engineering staff would be bringing forward um, repairs of sidewalks in our community that aren't warranted based upon safety issues, otherwise they wouldn't be, be on the list.
That, that, that's correct, Mr. Sandy, we put eyes on and validate each request, um, to make sure that it's warranted.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lieberman, any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I think I did that.
Oh, yes, we've already had a motion and a second, thank you very much. So, no other comments, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, thank you, Ms. Veen. Uh, item 2.3, plans and specs for project 8156, right turn lane at South Washington and 42nd Avenue South, Mr. Lieberman?
Uh, thank you, this next item is an economic development project, um, taking place at the intersection of South Washington and 42nd Avenue. Uh, there is currently a development, uh, on the western corner of this intersection. Uh, District Apartments is being constructed. Uh, this, uh, this project addresses, uh, the need to have a deceleration lane as traffic is traveling southbound on Washington and desiring to turn right into District Apartments. Uh, currently, it's a two-lane road without a signal, so there's no deceleration lane. Uh, this project will construct a deceleration lane to address any potential safety concerns there. Uh, the est- uh, the estimate is $122,000 for this. Uh, it would be 100% city funded, uh, from Fund 4815, the Streets and Infrastructure Fund. Uh, if approved, we would continue our schedule and seek council approval of bids on June 1st and construction in 2020. Uh, with that, we are requesting the council approve plans and specifications for this project.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Lieberman, any?
Oh, move approval.
A move approval.
Second by Marshall, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, item 2.4, award bid for project 8182, District 747, reconstruction of Belmont from 55th to 62nd Avenues South. Again, Mr. Lieberman?
Uh, thank you. Uh, this next item, uh, this project previously met the council for approval of plans and specifications uh, back on March 16th. Um, a- as the title indicates, this, uh, project reconstructs South Belmont, uh, from 55th Avenue um, down to, um, 62nd Avenue. This, this is currently a two-lane rural asphalt road with no streetlights. It's arguably, arguably the least developed section of Belmont and we desire to reconstruct that um, before the southernmost portion of Grand Forks builds up in that area as it builds up. Uh, we'd like to provide that infrastructure, we'd like the purchasers of homes in that neighborhood to know what their special assessments are going to be uh, because of Belmont's reconstruction before they purchase their home. Uh, so with that, uh, since plans and specifications were approved by the council, uh, we put this project out for bid. On April 20th, we received two bids. Uh, the low bid was by Op Construction, uh, for a little over 1.7 million dollars. Uh, incidentally, this bid, low bid was 15% under the engineer's estimate, so we're, we're really quite pleased with the bids. Uh, this project is an 80/20 split, so the city will be paying for 80% and the, uh, excuse me, from Fund 4815 and 20% will be special assessed, uh, to the benefiting properties. Uh, so with that, engineering is recommending, uh, award to the low bidder, uh, Op Construction.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lieberman, any, any questions regarding this project?
I would just go ahead and, and make the motion to approve.
Ms. Marshall moves approval, is there a second? By Weigle? Um, I think, uh, one thing perhaps noting for the public is, uh, if I, if my memory serves me correctly, this time last year, we were questioning why every bid was coming in 15 to 20% over the engineer's estimate. It's nice to see this coming in under the engineer's estimate. Uh, could be a sign of the times, um, could be, uh, uh, could be just our good fortune, so. There's a motion, yes, Mr. Lieberman?
Well, I was just gonna comment, we do have several projects this year that we're quite pleased with and we have a couple that we, we, we wish we were on the other side of the bid.
Right, right, I'm sure it, uh, it evens out over time. There's a motion and a second, yes, Ms. Mock.
Um, how are we sitting in these funds, you know, given current budget situations? Are we, are we pretty solid in these funds to keep work going so we're at a consistent pace this year and then into next year?
I think Councilmember Mock, we did, I think on all these projects that you see in front of you, we wouldn't be putting, hopefully, we would not be putting me in front of you if we couldn't afford them. Um, so, um, Marine, uh, Storsted, myself, we met with engineering, so we went through, um, the projects you see on your agenda tonight. There'll be one that we, um, are asking you not to move forward with for a couple, two reasons, one, budget. Number two, Altru is kind of stalled on their project protocol, so let's wait. But we felt comfortable with these, either they're new development related and I think in the Belmont case, let's try to get this project out of the way before it gets built right into there. And so we're trying to still be developed, where in private investment is occurring, like in this case, let's move forward with public infrastructure investment. So that, that's been our strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan, Ms. Mock, does that answer your question?
It does, and I was assuming with some of them, you know, there's a federal match or a state match, so that was probably why they were still on the priority list. Um, and then a project like this, if we, if we don't do it, we run the risk of development occurring without it. So, they make sense to me, I just wanted to ask the question.
Very good.
And Council President Sandy, when we, uh, have an opportunity to brief on the city council on kind of what we see as 2020 budget, you'll see some projects we plan to do over the summer where they were gonna hold back on, but you'll see those projects that, um, you likely won't see, but we'll identify those too.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.5, award bid for project 8094.1, intersection improvements at 43rd and Columbia and project 8094.2, District 746, paving a 43rd Avenue circle from Columbia to South 25th Street, Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, uh, this next item, uh, actually consists of two sub-projects. Uh, 8094.1, uh, improves the intersection at, uh, 43rd Avenue South and, and South Columbia. Uh, this is the city-funded portion of this project. Uh, the other portion, uh, portion is, uh, 8094.2, which consists of installing pavement, uh, storm sewer, uh, streetlights, um, in the 43rd Avenue circle, that, that portion is 100, 100% special assessed to the benefiting properties. Uh, we have previously, uh, brought this project before the council and on March 16th, uh, the council approved plans and specifications. Uh, since then, uh, it was put out for bid and on April 20th, we received, uh, three bids. Uh, the low bidder was Op Construction at, uh, 1,038,000 roughly. Uh, this indicate, this is, uh, 9% over the engineer's estimate. Um, little higher than we'd like, but not unreasonably higher. Uh, so with that, uh, we are recommending award of this project to Op Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman, any comments or questions regarding the project? Seeing none, is there a, is there a motion? Move by Weber, is there a second? Second by Mock? No other comments or questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.6, Engineering Services Contract for Project Number 8094.1, the intersection improvements at 43rd and Columbia and Project 80 94.2, District 746, paving a 43rd Avenue circle from Columbia Road to South 25th Street, so this would be the Engineering Services Contract for the previous project. Mr. Lieberman?
That, that's correct, thank you, uh, Mr. Sandy. Uh, previously, we had hired, uh, Houston Engineering to provide the design services, uh, for this project. Um, we have since assessed our staff's capabilities and, uh, we are projecting to, uh, unfortunately lose one of our uh, superstar staff members, uh, to a great opportunity, so our staff is one less than anticipated. So we would like to contract with Houston to perform the construction and surveying services, uh, construction management services for this, uh, construction as well. Uh, with that, um, if there are any questions, uh, staff recommends, um, approval of the service agreement, amendment of the service agreement.
Mr. Lieberman, um, just for point of clarification, that, that, uh, the cost for the engineering services is all passed along to the developer, correct?
The, uh, it, it's split into two portions, um. The portion for the intersection improvements, uh, would be funded by the city, since that's 100% city funded. The portion for the, uh, private, uh, the development of 43rd, uh, Avenue Circle uh, is 100% special assessed to the developer, uh, to the benefiting properties.
And how would that change if we had done this project internally rather than, um, hiring a consultant?
Uh, if we had done this internally, there, there would be no cost.
Got it. Okay, um, any other comments or questions?
Move approval.
Move by Veen, second by Weber? Any other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously.
Important questions and comments there, President Sandy, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, item 2.7, award bid for project 8018, District 735, reconstruction of 14th Avenue South, Columbia Road to South 30th Street, Mr. Lieberman, last but not least?
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Uh, this is the project that Mr. Phelan alluded to earlier. Um, this project was, is intended to reconstruct 14th Avenue South, immediately south of the Altru Campus. Um, this, this project was pre- previously met the council, uh, plans and specifications were approved back on April 6th. Uh, we did, uh, put this out for bid and received two bids. Um, but at the same time, we also became aware of Altru delaying the construction of their hospital or putting it on pause. So, for that reason, uh, and for just cautiousness of the, the city construction budget, we, uh, decided it would be a good idea for us to put our project on pause as well since it's supporting the development of their campus and their hospital. Uh, we saw no, no reason that this had to be constructed this year and I think we could reassess it and bring it forward for, uh, rebidding next year. Uh, with that, we are recommending that the, uh, the committee and the council reject bids, uh, for this project.
Mr. Lieberman, any questions or anyone wish to reject the bids?
Or move, reject the bids.
Move by Weigle to reject the bids, is there a second? Second by Marshall, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.8, award bid for project 7950, traffic signal, backplate and red light confirmation indicator lights. Mr. Krinko, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. The proposed project consists of installation of the backplates with retroreflective borders on traffic signal heads as well as the installation of red light confirmation, uh, lights at 17 signalized intersections throughout the city. This project does use federal funds through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is a 90/10 split for construction, construction engineering services. Uh, this project is receiving approximately $228,000 in federal funds and the anticipated local share for this or the design engineering as well as the, the local share of it, uh, is anticipated to be about 113,000. We did receive three bids at the April 17th, uh, NDOT bid opening in Bismarck. Overall, the engineer's estimate for the project was approximately 230,000 and we received bids ranging from approximately 245,000 to 338,000. Uh, the low bid was for Morehead Electric in the amount of, uh, 245,079, which was approximately 6% over the engineer's estimate and staff is recommending a word of the contract to Morehead Electric.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko. Any, uh, comments or questions or thoughts, yes, Mr. Weber?
I'll move approval, but Mr. Krinko, um, help me understand what this looks like when, when this project is done. As I pull up to an intersection, how is it gonna look different for me?
Uh, the big differences that you're gonna see are the, at the signal heads themselves, the red, amber and green. Typically, there's a black backplate that surrounds that. What this project is gonna do is it's gonna replace those backplates, which is gonna be a big maintenance benefit for us as well as there's going to be a retroreflective strip on the border of that, which is gonna make that signal head really pop particularly at night. Uh, this is in an effort to try to, uh, prevent, um, accidental red light running and then also there's going to be on some of the signal heads, you'll end up seeing a blue light, which will be mounted to them and this is an effort to allow police enforcement to use a single officer to enforce red light running, uh, instead of requiring two officers.
Okay. Any other? Any other questions, Mr. Krinko, I have a question. Um, the do- design engineering costs of 71,400, would we have the capabilities internally to do the design engineering on this? Had, had we been at full staff?
Likely, yes. I, I would also like to point out that, uh, the consultant engineer that we brought on board only used a fraction of that contract amount.
Aha, thank you. Any, any other comments or thoughts of good of the order? Anyone wanna move forward with the, uh?
I'll move.
Mr. Weber moves approval? Second, second by Dockler? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously, item 2.9, um, CPMA for project 8228, reconstruction of 4th Street from Demers Avenue to First Avenue North. Mr. Krinko?
All right, well, this is a standard agreement for the Cost Participation Construction and Maintenance Agreement with, uh, the North Dakota Department of Transportation and this is for using approximately 1.6 million dollars in federal funds, uh, through the, uh, pretty much the Governor's Main Street Initiative Urban Grant Program. Uh, proposed project is anticipated to reconstruct North 4th Street from Demers Avenue to, uh, First Avenue North during approximately, we're thinking probably the 2022 construction season. Uh, this project is anticipated to include similar aesthetic features, similar to what is included on the Demers Avenue project and what's proposed on the North Third Street Reconstruction Project. The project is anticipated to be a 80% federal, 20% local cost share for construction, construction engineering and 100% city funded for the design engineering. Uh, city share for this project is currently anticipated to be approximately 674,000 and staff is recommending approval of the Cost Participation Construction and Maintenance Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko, yes, Mr. Weber?
Um, well, I'd just like to point out that I, I frequently hear from constituents that, uh, uh, they'll see one project happening in town and thinking, why are we spending money on this project? We have potholes over here and it's hard to, uh, help people to understand that these projects come from different pots of money. And so, uh, this project might be going on while, uh, for instance, the potholes on University that I'm getting very frustrated of trying to navigate around might take a while longer because we'll have to wait for that pot of money to come in, but uh, i- in addition to pointing that out, that, that this is a great project, um, even though there might be other projects around town, but we get a chance to bring in, uh, 1.6 million dollars in federal funds to help with this. Beyond that, I'd also like to point out, uh, Mr. Krinko, how many, how many federal dollars have you brought into the city over the last four or five years in grants like this? My understanding is, this one was considered kind of a long shot. Uh, you put the time in, you're bringing in a lot of federal dollars to, to help us fix up our seats, uh, our streets here. Uh, so I don't know if you have a number in, in mind that you could tell us how much you've brought in, in federal funds, but my understanding is, uh, you've been a particularly successful grant writer for the city and I just wanted to, to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, uh, no, I don't keep track of that, uh, the amount that I bring in.
You should.
But, gotta. I try not, I try not to. Uh, but we do, we have been very successful on the competitive grants. So, thank you.
I'll move approval.
Move by Weber, is there a second? Second by Dockler? Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries and of course, uh, Mr. Weber is correct, thank you very much for everything you do for our community, Mr. Krinko. Um, item 210, small cell agreement with Verizon. Last item?
Yep. Uh, this draft agreement with Verizon, uh, that's before you, was a follow-up to our small cell ordinance that you saw at, uh, the last committee, the whole. Uh, this agreement is in draft form, includes annual fees which are comparable to the rates that Fargo and mine under charging. Uh, Verizon staff have been in communication with city staff regarding the draft agreement and, uh, we've provided those comments over to, uh, the city attorney to review and to incorporate into the agreement as needed. Um, I believe we have Tammy Hartman on the line, uh, with Verizon and, uh, invite her to make any comments she would have on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Krinko, can you hear me, committee, I hope you can? It's good to be in front of you again, although, once again, virtual, I hope you're all safe and healthy. Um, your city staff, I will give you accolades again, have been just amazing to work with on this agreement and the ordinance, so, Mr. Krinko, Attorney Swanson, um, we're plugging, plugging away at this, you know, quite rapidly, so I'm here for any questions that you may have. Um, I'll be present anytime you need me to speak, so, but I look forward again to Verizon's But I look forward again to Verizon's deployment in the city of Grand Forks.
Any, uh, any comments or questions for Mr. Krinko or Ms. Hartman? Quick question, uh, David, um, why are we using the, the rates that are being paid in other cities to determine what rate should go in our, our agreement?
Seems to be a fair and reasonable amount without, uh, delving into too many details. This is an annual rate. Um, I believe the safe harbor amount that is, uh, and Mr. Swanson, please feel free to jump in here. Um, I believe the safe harbor amount that, uh, the FCC has out there is about two hundred and seventy dollars a year. Um, we ended up wanting to be competitive as well as making sure that, uh, we can encourage the five G deployment. So we ended up looking at other cities and Fargo, Minot, as, as well as Bismarck for their current rates and decided to follow suit.
Great. Any, any other comments or questions? Mr. Wygle?
Uh, Mr. Krinko, would it be better if we, um, not so much undercut them, but made it a little cheaper to, uh, make them wanna bring their five G here a little bit sooner rather than later? Do you think that would have any impact?
Uh, that, I honestly don't have a solid answer for one way or the other. Um, certainly with, with any business model, if you lower the price point, it might encourage. However, at the same time, those, the costs that we put into that maintenance agreement is kind of to help offset the costs associated with staff or reviewing and maintaining the paperwork and the documentation that we require as well. So we do wanna make sure that we hit a balance point between encouraging five G deployment as well as covering city costs as well. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions, comments?
Chairman, if I may, this is Howard.
Mr. Swanson.
The reports nationally are that the driving factor for the installation of five G is a market. What are the needs, uh, of the community? What are the needs of particular areas of the community? The statistical data doesn't seem to suggest that the cost has a particular motivating factor for the installation of five G. It can have a disincentive, but I've not seen any reports, uh, to the contrary. Uh, I would invite Verizon to indicate differently, but that's my understanding of what's happened out there uh, throughout the United States to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Any, any other questions? Are there any thoughts?
Move approval.
Moved by Wygle. Good idea, Mr. Wygle. Is there a second by Marshall? Great. Ms. Marshall, did you have a comment as well? Very good. Any, uh, any other comments for the good of the order? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Krinko. And thank you again for what you do for our community. Appreciate it. Um, item two eleven. Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System Upgrades, project number eighty two twenty nine. Is Ms. Parvy on with us tonight? Will she be presenting? There she is. Oh, Ms. Parvy.
Good evening, um, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. So tonight I'm asking for you to approve a press professional services agreement with A E two S to be able to, and implement our SCADA system. The SCADA system, um, that we're asking you to upgrade is for the storm water, wastewater and flood protection storm stations. Um, we've been planning this upgrade for the last couple of years. A couple of things I wanted to share is that with the new water plant online, the SCADA system has been upgraded to a program, um, called Wonderware. Currently, we have different SCADA programs in each of the water divisions. And we're cur- and we're working towards upgrading so that we'd all have the same SCADA system, this Wonderware. The reason for that is because we have different systems, so it's a little bit more challenging for um, the operators at the water plant to be able to understand what each program is and how it operates. Um, they're able to do that, but that's not the problem. It's that we currently have some issues with our existing systems. They're intermittent. And, um, it, it's a twenty four hour monitoring system for us. So basically, when we're not there, um, this is a system that allows us to know when a pump fails, when the electricity goes out, um, when we have high water levels in a station, so we can get on to take care of that. Um, versus, you know, having sewage in people's basements. So, um, really the best option for us right now is to, to tag along and, and upgrade our system with the water treatment plant. And, um, that is a project that we have deemed essential. We have talked with, um, Mr. Phelan and, and Marine Storsted to talk about other projects that we can hold on for this year. Um, but we do ask for your approval in, in being able to proceed with this project this evening.
Great, thank you. Any other, any questions? Yes, Mr. Wygle.
Uh, just gonna see if Ms. Mock and Mr. Bean wanted to be recused from the vote.
Yeah, that was gonna be my request.
Great.
You're on top of it. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Wygle, second by Marshall to recuse Ms. Mock and Mr. Bean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Any questions regarding the project?
Move approval.
Seeing none, moved by Weber. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marshall. Any questions? Seeing, hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Mock and Bean were recused. Last item on the agenda tonight, item two twelve, uh, mobile video camera system upgrade for cities area transit. Um, Mr. Bergman. Yes, good evening.
Evening, Council President Sandy, um, and members of the committee. What this is, is we're going to replace the video camera systems in four of our twenty ten, uh, buses that we've got. They've been in there since about two thousand two. So they're eighteen years old. We can no longer get the software or hardware to read them anymore. This will upgrade our, um, software and the hardware that we need to read these cameras and store the information. And they are gonna be changed to what they call four K cameras. And this would be a sole source with the current video supplier of all of our video cameras on our buses. And this would, uh, be replaced as off of our city budget that we have.
Excellent. Any, uh, questions for Mr. Bergman?
Move approval.
Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second?
Si- a second.
Second by Veen. Any other thoughts or questions?
Most of this is federal funding, right, Mr. Bergman?
That is correct, sir.
Best majority, federal funding. Very good. Um, any other comments for the good of the order? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Could I ask a quick question? Oh, sorry.
Um, the motion carries unanimously, Mr. Weber.
Could I ask you a quick, quick question of, uh, engineering? I, um, I mentioned a bit ago, the frustration when you see one road project being done in one part of the city and another road seems to be in horrible shape. Um, when will we have the outside funding to support, uh, the, the reconstruction of university? It's a mess, but.
University, um, Mr. Weber is scheduled to be done this year. It'll be done from Third Street. Um, all the way through campus in those parts that were not completed. Um, so, and that's one of those federal, state, local projects that we had to wait on. So the good news is it's gonna get done. I, if I give you one exception, there's that, um, the one block strip from Columbia Road to University Park is gonna be done more temporarily because that plan is to reconstruct that, I think, two years from now. And so, um, that won't be part of it. We took that out just to do a minor. So the good news is it'll all get done this summer.
Very good. I'll still have a couple of potholes next spring on that one stretch, though.
No, it'll be done. It's gonna get.
It'll be done as well.
But it's gonna be done less well because it's gonna get reconstructed two years from now.
Very good. Thanks, thanks.
Mr. Phelan, I, I believe that that stretch is gonna be done in the same vein as the rest of University Avenue that runs through campus. They're just not prepared to do it today because of the reconstruction on that parking lot and potentially with the the fraternities and sororities down that stretch, if I recall correctly.
The good news is it'll be much smoother, hopefully by sometime in and around August.
Yep. For, for us avid bikers, there's lots of potholes there. So it, we're all looking forward to getting that redone. Um, that's everything on the agenda for tonight. Uh, anything else for the good of the order?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Weber, second by Marshall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.